Time set aside for any citizen who would like to speak to the commission on a matter, or matters that are not on the day's official agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward for that purpose? Seeing none, we'll move on. There are no awards and proclamations today, or public hearings, so we will continue with the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of August 13th, 2007.
I entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I did have a question on the minutes.
Oh, excuse me.
I'm sorry, I'm slow pulling it out here. Page three, talking about, about the South Ninth Street, Mr. Gage noted that the staff would not proceed with the final design stage until South Ninth Street improvements, on the South Ninth, until the study session is brought back. I thought it was actually that we were just not going to proceed with bidding until...
That's correct.
It's bidding.
Bidding.
Okay. That was my correction then. It's bidding, not the design stage. We're already doing the design stage. Okay, thank you.
You want to second that?
Oh, I'll second the motion with that correction. Is that what I'm doing?
Yeah. Motion is to approve the minutes with that correction. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose same sign. That passes five to zero. There's no development business today, so we will continue with items of administration.
Item 8.1, second reading ordinance number 07-10405, levying special assessments against certain lots and pieces of property to pay the cost of abatement of nuisances.
We've had no comments received since first reading. It looks like a few people have paid up because it says that the amount has been reduced by $606. So with that, I entertain a motion on second reading.
Mayor, I move for adoption of ordinance 07-10405 on second reading.
Second.
Motion is to approve ordinance 07-10405, levying special assessments against certain lots and pieces of property to pay for the cost of abatement of nuisances. Will a clerk please call a roll?
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Peck?
Aye.
Commissioner Perny?
Aye.
Commissioner Vanir?
Aye.
Mayor Joka?
Aye.
Item 8.2, second reading ordinance number 07-10408, adding section 23-3 to chapter 23, Article 1 of the Siena Code, addressing authority for sentencing and probation issues.
This likewise passed on first reading this past week. Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, I entertain commission action.
Mayor, I'd move for adoption of ordinance 07-10408 on second reading.
Second.
The motion is to approve on second reading ordinance, dash, ordinance 07-10408, amending these specific sections of Siena Code regarding authority for sentencing and probation issues. Will clerk please call a roll?
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Peck?
Aye.
Commissioner Perny?
Aye.
Commissioner Vanir?
Aye.
Mayor Joka?
Aye.
Item 8.3, second reading ordinance number 07-10409, adding section 25-101 to chapter 25, Article 6 of the Siena Code, making it a violation of city ordinance to fail to pay for mu- motor fuel.
Likewise, this passed on first reading last week. We've had no comments since. I don't entertain any additional public comment, if there is any. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd move for adoption of ordinance 07-10409 on second reading.
Second.
Motion approves on second reading, ordinance 07-10409, adding a section to the Siena Code, making it a violation of city ordinance to fail to pay for motor fuel. Will clerk please call a roll?
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Peck?
Aye.
Commissioner Perny?
Aye.
Commissioner Vanir?
Aye.
Mayor Joka?
Aye.
Item 8.4, resolution number 07-6428, appointing members to various boards and commissions.
And those appointments are, let me see if they're all here. No, they're not. To the Arts and Manages Commission, Sherry Parr, Shirley Braxton, and Alejandro Tenorio. To the Community Art and Design Committee, Patrick Billmeyer, Brett Anderson, Margene Clark, Robert Brown, and Frank Cody. To the BID Improvement District Number One, Design Review Board, Eloise Lynch, Charles Rents, and David Beaverly. To the Convention Tourism Committee, Paul Webb and Greg Stevens. To the Disciplinary Advisory Board, Larry Turnquist. To the Housing Authority Board, Bruce Beneshek and Catherine Hill. To the Human Relations Commission, Sidney Gray, Tony Blair, Terry Beaster, Richard Orton, and Chanelle Thomas. To the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Henrietta Corcoran Boyer and Jerry Shoemaker. To the Planning Commission, Patrick Miccel, Les Appleby, and Aaron Householder. To the Solid Waste Committee, Matt Wagner, Sandra Johnson, Richard Durey, Paul Deegan, Douglas Tobin, and Ken Krier. And to the Board of Zoning Appeals, Don Schmidt. I entertain a motion on...
Mayor, I'd move for adoption of resolution 07-6428.
Second.
Motion is to approve resolutions 07-6428, making the above-mentioned appointments to various boards and commissions. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose same sign. That passes five to zero.
Item 8.5, resolution number 07-6429, consenting to the levy of 2.877 mils in the year 2007 for the use by the Siena Airport Authority in the year 2008.
Ms. France?
Mayor and Commissioners, the City of Siena created the Airport Authority in 1965 for the purpose of managing the, the property formerly known as Schilling Air Force Base. At the time of creation and continuing since then, the Airport Authority has given very broad powers, operates with a great deal of independence. However, there's a couple of things that the, they need to come to the city for, for specific approval. One of those is the approval of their annual mill levy. They have requested this year a mill levy totaling 2.877 mils. That's the same as it was last year. And the full amount of the mill levy goes to make payments on general obligation bonds that have been previously, previously, I'm sorry, authorized. I believe we have a representative of the Airport Authority here, if you have any specific questions, or I could try to address any questions you might have also.
Questions, Ms. France?
Am I correct, in my recollection, that the Airport Authority levy is only assessed against city property?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, Ms. France. I'd like to entertain any public comment on the resolution, if there is any. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I'd move that resolution number 07-6429, consenting the levy of the Airport Authority tax base at 2.877 mils be approved.
Second.
Motion is to approve ordinance 07-6429, consenting to the levy of 2.877 mils in the year 2000 for use by the Siena Airport Authority in the year 2008. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose same sign. That passes five to zero.
Item 8.6, resolution number 07-6430, authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement for professional planning services to update the City of Siena's comprehensive plan.
Ms. Craig?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As we've previously discussed, the city's comprehensive plan serves as our official guide for future growth and development, and it's relied upon heavily when we consider future land uses, rezoning, and development planning in general. And as we also previously reported to you, our current plan was prepared in 1991 and adopted in 1992, and it's good planning practice to update a community's comprehensive plan on a regular basis, typically at least once every 10 years. We have the opportunity, as part of this particular comprehensive plan update, to address a number of the shared vision and strategic planning items that have recently been identified by the city commission. In fact, you may have noticed in the conformance with strategic plan section of this report, I've inserted all of the shared vision statements and all of the strategic plan items. I don't want to purport that the comprehensive plan update would necessarily solve all those items, but it certainly has the opportunity to touch on, address, and consider all those items. Staff conducted a qualifications-based selection process to solicit and consider qualifications from comp plan consultants. Ultimately, we received 11 qualification statements, and they were reviewed by a committee comprised of both city and county staff, a planning commission member, a representative of the Chamber of Commerce, and a citizen at large. Through that process, we identified four firms for initial interviews, and two finalist firms which were brought back for a second interview. Based upon the prioritization of the review committee, the staff then tried to negotiate a scope of services with the comp plan consultants in the order that they were prioritized. And I would point out that Dean Andrew and myself put considerable emphasis on community input and participation, as we felt that that was a key focal point that needed to be considered, was communicated to us by the city commission, and it adds credibility to what ultimately may be adopted in terms of a comp plan update. Attached to the report, you should have received a scope of services as well as the agreement. And in the report, I did not identify in detail the different phases, but did note that there are six specific phases called out in the scope of services. And as part of that concentration on community input, we identified that the scope of services incorporates 10 site visits to the community, which include approximately 35 public or community meetings, resulting in the consultants being in the community up to 22 days. Additionally, then, there's considerable time outside of those periods that they're in the community where they would need to work on deliverables along with their subconsultants. The contract is a fixed-not-to-exceed format, such that the consultant will bill us on a monthly basis for the hours of work completed, up to a maximum fee of $192,310, and they may not exceed that maximum fee without written authorization from the city. And I noted in the report that while the contract amount is significant, staff has reviewed the fee in light of other consulting services and projects, and other comprehensive plan projects, and the level of service and public participation incorporated into the scope of services, and we've concluded that the scope and the proposed fee are appropriate. As I mentioned, as part of the conformance with the strategic plan, I noted all of the shared vision items, as well as all the strategic planning items. They very much are either true planning items or community development items, either of which could be incorporated into the comprehensive plan update. As far as the fiscal note, the proposed fee of $192,310 is within the $200,000 budgeted in the 2007 budget, and staff has identified four options for your consideration. The first of those being approving resolution 07-6430, which would authorize the mayor to enter into the attached agreement with Gould Evans Associates. The second is to deny that resolution, resulting in rejection of the proposed agreement and scope of services. You also could instruct staff regarding amending the proposed agreement and scope, or you could instruct staff regarding further solicitation of qualifications or negotiation of an agreement. As I mentioned, I did not go into the detail of each of the scope of service items, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions, Ms. Craig?
Just to make sure I'm clear, the timeline on this looks like it's about 13 months?
Yes, and that part of that is subject to availability of scheduling those various public meetings, but that is kind of the draft timeline that we've prepared.
Did you feel a need to draw it out that long, or...?
In part, that's from the consultant's experience in terms of both the timing of the meetings, as well as the time that they need to prepare their different deliverables between them. The scope of services actually goes into greater detail in terms of the timeframe between each step, but there will be quite a bit of effort that they have to put forth in response to the various meetings that they have in drafting the documents. So frankly, we initially were expecting anywhere from, from 12 to 18 months is kind of the typical timeframe.
And the company is from Missouri, so will they, is that where the person will be traveling here from?
Yes, the, the primary firm of Gould Evans is based in Kansas City, Missouri. Their subconsultants, one of them is Wilson Company, here in the community. The other two, Larry Seaman and Associates, are based out of Fort Collins, and Community Futures, I believe, is based out of Brighton, Colorado. But one of the things that we found in negotiating the scope of services with them was they were very willing to commit to commuting to the community and conducting many community meetings and forums.
Okay. Well, I noticed out of that amount, about $11,350 are just their expenses to come, which means about 180,000 of it is the actual...
Right. And for what it's worth, in terms of the various responses we've received for the qualifications, we received some in the local area, we received some from either coast. So I think the amount of time that they're committing and the expenses reflect the fact that they are a little bit more local, being in the Kansas City metro area.
Okay, thank you.
Who is going to appoint these focus groups and various committees that they talk about?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of your question.
Who, who is in charge of, it talks about the city's staff responsibilities to appoint the focus groups, contact interview candidates. Who does that?
One of those focus groups will be a technical committee, which will primarily be comprised of the applicable staff within the organization that can respond to the background information that they need. Another, one of them could very well be a citizens committee, and that appointment process is open to suggestion, but I think our intention is to try to get a good cross-section. And additionally, they've identified four focus groups, so we would try to identify citizen members that specialize in those particular focus groups. And lastly, there is open forums that are open to the entire public. So our intention would be try to get an accurate cross-section based on the different function, and then there's also that open-ended opportunity for public input.
Commissioners, we anticipate on the focus groups that certainly, whatever role you'd want to have, whether it be direct appointment, whether it be creating a list of names, and you want us to contact folks, however you want to do that, it's fine, because when it says staff, it's really talking about city responsibilities. So you're going to have some time to think about that a little bit, but then we'll try to help give you some options with that.
Looking at the timeline, though, the focus groups are primarily going to meet in this winter, November, December, and January. Is that...
Yes, I believe that's correct. They are in one of the later phases. The first couple of steps will be public participation, participation plan development, and then background information gathering, and then we'll get into more of the, the public Looks like focus groups are in the latter phases of, or portion of phase two.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Just one other addition to that, too. One of the purpose of the focus groups is, if you recall, some time ago, staff took you through sort of an inventory of possible things. This is before the last election as well, but took you through an inventory of possible topics to really address in this plan, beyond just the general planning. And for example, housing came up, connectivity came up as far as transportation and otherwise, and there were some other things. So really, the purpose of the focus groups is determine which of those we feel are the most important, and have folks really focus in on some of those key areas, to help provide input that will create, in essence, little, somewhat, I don't know if "subplans" is the right word, but at least plan emphasis within this plan. So for example, we'd expect to see out of this on connectivity, if we're focusing on a part of it being the hike or bike paths, a general framework and objectives for what we'd want to do with that. And so if you wanted a focus group for that topic, you would appoint folks from whatever backgrounds you'd want to have on that group, to help, help you kind of formulate that, and that's really what they're for.
Additional questions of staff? Seeing none, I'd like to invite any public comment. I know this is a real important undertaking for the community, and appreciate the work that staff has put in to get us to this point, and I entertain a motion this time.
Mayor, I'd move for passes of resolution 07-642, 6430, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for professional planning services to update the City of Siena's comprehensive plan with Gould Evans Associates in the amount of $192,310.
Second.
Motion is to approve resolution 07-6430, authorizing a contract for comprehensive plan update with Gould Evans Associates. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose same sign. That passes five to zero.
Item 8.7, resolution number 07-6424, authorizing an ambulance transfer agreement with Siena Regional Health Center.
Chief Milliken?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. To, to extend our discussion from last week, in which you provided direction to the fire department to go back and, and work with the contract that we were provided by the hospital, and that's an important point, that I emphasized that. The contract we had last week was provided by the hospital, and we were trying to work with that. And several of the terms in there were a little bit ambiguous and caused some confusion, so we took your direction and went back and worked with it, and made changes to the contract. And we changed the title of the contract to reflect transport services, which is different in our definitions from transfer services, which actually transfers a patient's responsibility from one facility to another. During the study session, I will point back to it just briefly, for just a second, to make sure there's no confusion in that when Dr. Hackett was talking about civilian transfers, he was talking about transfers, not transports, which is different. Those were patients that were released, taken to a distance, when he was talking about Denver and other places, that's what he was referring to. This contract solely addresses in-house patients that the hospital never releases. They go to local facilities within Seline County and are returned to the hospital. So we changed the title of the contract to reflect transport services. The standardization of language referring to transport services for in-house patients, we made that term consistent, eliminated any reference to trans, transfers. Eliminated any reference that could be considered a sole providership. And you heard last week from the, from the hospital administration saying that they can have one contract or 50 contracts, it doesn't matter to them. They're just wanting to have a contract with the city to provide these services. Specified that the charges are $220 round trip for providing those services. There was some discussion last week as far as whether it was one-way or two-way, we tried to clean that up and specify that, that that was round trip. And specifies that transports are only for facilities within Seline County. One of the things that we did provide to you as just a reference document was a, was a receipt sheet listing patient numbers, not names, not anything that could be construed as against HIPAA requirements, but for your own information, for that purpose of identifying patient numbers and dates that service was delivered, clearly, clearly demonstrated that previously our charges were $200 round trip, not one way. And so that's the reason continuing this contract on at $220 is consistent with what we have been doing in the past. The second thing that I thought was important is that we touched on this last week, in the fact that, as I started out, that there is a difference between transfers and, and transports, in-house patient transports. We handle in-house patient transports with on-duty crews, and that is totally different from out-of-city transfers. And to execute this contract with the current service level that we provide requires no additional ambulances and no additional personnel, it's just extending our current arrangement into a formalized contract. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have of us. I hope we followed your directions, I hope we got done what you asked us to do.
Questions, Chief Milliken?
I apologize for not being here last week, but did you have a, an accounting of what it costs per trip to do those trips?
An accounting of how much it costs as far as per man-hour or things of that nature?
Right, man-hour, wear and tear on the equipment, fuel charges, things like that.
Other than, other than an average, some patients are treated and released fairly quickly, some of them would take a little bit longer. We could certainly come up with an average, but it, I'm not sure it would mean a whole lot to you, because some of them are released fairly quickly. In fact, Marvin, you may want to speak to this here, he has more history with that. Our chief of EMS, come on. This is our chief of EMS, Marlon Mann Blair Con.
These transports normally take anywhere between 30 minutes and an hour, depending on how long their stay at the specialty area will be. Sometimes we wait on them, and sometimes we come back and pick them up. So we're only talking about no more than an hour at the most on any of these transports.
But you don't know what it costs per trip?
Well, you figure, per hour of our personnel, you're talking with the, and it's probably less than $75 per hour.
According to some of the notes, I understand that it's $220 is what you're charging, and you are being reimbursed usually by their primary insurance.
No, not on these.
Or, or Medicare, for example.
We're not, no, the hospital reimburses us for this.
Correct.
The cost that Medicare would reimburse is $213 and some odd cents.
So are you recovering all your costs to operate that on any given day?
Yes. Per transfer, yes.
Commissioners, one thing to take into some consideration as well is that we do get contribution from Seline County for EMS services. That's part of the local, or in our local agreement that was signed many, many years ago, and I think roughly, the review of that shows that that all makes up probably a third, somewhere in the area of a third of the total cost. And what we, when we look at that, we say that helps us look at the, the overhead costs. You have to station your equipment, you have utilities and costs to do that, and so really when we look at this, we're looking more at our direct costs.
One of the things that we talked about last week, and since Commissioner Vanir wasn't here last week, we talked about this payment process, and the fact that, that the hospital pays us to make these in-house transports, regardless of whether they receive payment or not. Our experience, as we demonstrated last week in some documents, is that about 42% of our patients are Medicare, but 38% or so is private insurance, 10% are private pay, and about 10% or a little bit more are people that cannot pay or will not pay, are basically uncollectibles. Hospitals' rate is probably a little higher than that, they probably have a little more Medicare patients using these services, and they probably have a little higher rate of no pays. But we get paid, when we, when we submit a listing of transports that were made, we were paid within two weeks. They in turn may turn around and probably do file it against their insurance and, and into Medicare, and they're reimbursed $213, and it takes them 60 to 90 days to get that, while we're reimbursed within them, within two weeks. So there is, there is some, some real benefit for us, because we're paid regardless of whether they collect anything.
And the hos- the hospital absorbs that cost, obviously, on non-payment?
Yes, they do.
And you are still just doing it from 8:00 AM till 9:00 PM?
Yes.
So what happens if a patient is ready to be picked up at 9:30?
Well, we return...
Or 10 o'clock?
We return them. Go ahead. Well, they usually don't...
The transport part does not have a timeframe to it. Where that timeframe came in was for out-of-town transfers, like to Wichita, Topeka, and Kansas City. The in-town transports that we do do not have a timeframe to them, they are scheduled. We will take them at any point in time.
It's in your agreement that we were just handed.
Yeah, Commissioner, the language in the agreement, it says that in-house transports should be scheduled between the hours of eight and 21, 2100 hours, so it's not a black and white, it doesn't have to be. They could be scheduled any time during the day.
You have to remember that most of these places where we're transporting these patients to is close at 6, 7, 8 o'clock at night, so we don't anticipate those transports from the hospital to Siena Amaging Center, Siena, our... Salina, or Tammy Walker Cancer Center, and some of those areas, because those are scheduled during the day while the physicians are around, so they can do their procedures. So we don't anticipate those calls after 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock at night, but we do, if it's an inpatient transport, we are available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, but like I said, they're almost always scheduled, okay? In response to Commissioner Vaneer's question about the cost, when we set our fees for standby times, and that's what we usually figure on a per-hour cost basis, our fee is set at $77 an hour, okay? So that's why I've come up with about $75. We set that fee, being able to determine that that would cover all of our costs if we had to go out and stand by somewhere for one hour, and that's $77.
Any other questions?
Mayor, if I may? Just a quick point to explain the timing of the distribution of the agreement. We had thought at best, with those modifications having been made, not to have versions out that had not been approved by hospital, the hospital and the hospital's council as well. And the reason for my coming in late and handing those out when I did was because we did obtain word this afternoon that those approvals had been received, so that version that you see before you has been approved by the hospital's council.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Like to open it up for any public comment on the proposed agreement. If you could give us your name and address.
Tom Loudus, 2379 Northwood Lane in Salina. I just have a couple of questions for Chief or the board. When they want to do these transports during business hours, how many on average do they do? Will that deplete the available number of available EMTs or ambulances during a possible critical time? If another company has come in and has already made arrangements to add extra personnel and extra vehicles on this, why isn't that going to tax the city in the way of equipment and personnel and manpower?
Okay. We will, in a minute, well, Chief, you want to address that?
We provide these one at a time, so we utilize two medical personnel to make these transfers. They're routine, they're done during the day. We have not had any significant logistical problems in providing this service for, what would you say, 20 years or so?
Well, the transfer.
I mean, it's been quite a period of time that we've been in the transfer business.
In the transfer business, we've been doing it from day one since 1980, when Saline County EMS and Salina Fire Department took over in 1983. We've only been doing the inpatient transport since 2006, January of 2006, and like the chief says, they are a scheduled item. It's not like calling 911 and requesting an ambulance to respond. These are scheduled by the hospital or Tammy Walker or Salina Regional Imaging Center, and we do that with an on-duty crew. We use only one crew, we only schedule one transfer at a time, the hospital's in agreement that if we have, let's say that they have to go to different areas, we'll drop one off, the crew will come back to the hospital, pick up the second patient, take it, go pick the first one, bring it back, go back and pick up the second one. So it does not minimize our staffing as well. We still have three units available throughout that whole time.
If there was a transport scheduled and a greater emergency intervened, it just had to be postponed, or they'd have to call somebody else, or?
No, we'll, we'll actually take the emergency transfer, whether it goes to Wichita, Kansas City, or Topeka at that point in time, we'll call in off-duty crews to cover at that point.
I think, was your question about a general emergency, a fire emergency, or a major incident occurring? Is that what you were saying?
Yeah, well, I think that's, that's what the gentleman's question was aimed at.
No, it does not limit our availability. We'll still have three ALS units available with one taking the transfer.
Commissioners, just to add to that, if you look at the call detail sheet that was included, and you count up for 2006, it's a pretty good, that's the best indication we have, it's a full year's worth of information, it doesn't even average one full, or one transfer per day. So it, there's definitely not a volume there that would disrupt the regular 911 operations.
And like I said, we've been doing this for the last year and a half, inpatient transports, and so, you know, some of the discussion has been the private ambulance service starting up, and it kind of goes back to your question last week. You know, I thought that was a very good question, is did you talk to the fire department in your business plan, did you talk to all these other people? And the answer to that unfortunately is no, you know.
Prior to you taking on this contract last year, or in '06, when the private company was also doing it, did you ever have to pick up the slack, or was there ever a happy medium where they did call you because maybe they were busy, or vice versa?
That's before my time, Marvin needs to speak.
Yeah, we had, we had a pretty good working relationship with Tom Schuler and TAC, and Tom primarily handled non-emergency transfers, but Tom only had two units, and a lot of times only had one unit, so if he was out, we had to pick up the slack on going to nursing homes, picking up patients, and stuff like that. That had, again, no problem there, we weren't overtaxed in doing so. Like I said, we, I want to put this, we never at any point in time denied or was not able to offer service on an emergency basis because of transfers.
Commissioners, back to the call detail, in 2005, there were about 18 calls, if I counted quickly right, so just one and a half a month, something like that on the average, so not a lot, just very infrequently.
Right.
Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for additional questions and/or action.
Mayor, I'd move for approval of Resolution Number 076424, authorizing an ambulance, is this to be transfer, transport agreement?
Transport.
Transport agreement? Transport agreement with Salina Regional Health Center.
Second? Motion is to authorize Resolution 07-6424, authorizing the ambulance transport agreement between the city of Salina and Salina Regional Health Center. Comment before we vote, I'm very sensitive to the argument that the city should not be involved in endeavors where there's all, there's private entities already providing that service. Question is, what happens if that falls through? And since we do have recent experience of a case where a company doing that went out of business, that kind of tips me over into a position of support of the motion.
With that, I'd like to add that you can't always judge a book by its cover, or go by the majority, or what's been here before is going to happen again. I think they did do their homework well, and I am a huge proponent of private enterprise and small businesses, and I wanted to obviously see that they had a chance in the community to have their private business supported by the community, and not, not already doom them to fail before they even had a chance to compete with, with the city. But I do have a problem sometimes with the city involved in the private sector.
Additional comments? Additional comments? Seeing none, we'll call a question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
That passes four to one, with Larson dissenting. Let's see, we have a request. Executive session?
Mayor, I move that the city commission recess into executive session for 25 minutes in order to, one, discuss with the city attorney a matter subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion could waive the privilege and jeopardize the city's position in the matter, and, two, discuss a matter involving non-elected city personnel for the reason that public discussion of the matter would violate the privacy rights of the non-elected city personnel involved, and reconvene in this room at 5:05 p.m.
Second? I don't believe there's any action, anticipated potential action, okay. Motion to go into executive session for 25 minutes, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We will go into executive session.